All right, I'd like to call to order the Board of Education's special meeting of Monday, June 12th, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is a motion to appoint a clerk pro tem. Dr. Champ, do you have a motion?
Is it moved?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? No, the motion carries. And the next item is a motion to acknowledge the pilot agreement. Now, we've discussed, we can take this motion, we could amend the motion. If people don't feel like they have enough information, we could just adjourn the meeting at this point.
Wait, to acknowledge or not object?
Right now, it says, "Motion to acknowledge pilot agreement," and the language is that we have no objection to the terms of the pilot agreement.
Those are two different things, sorry.
Yes, because there was a different version of the resolution offered yesterday that would change the resolved clause to, that has, um, sorry, that authorizes its president and/or the district superintendent to advise the village and county IDA that the school district takes no position concerning the terms of the pilot agreement. If you prefer that version, someone would just need to make a motion to amend.
Can you just read that one more time?
Sure. It's revised. So, there was, at the request of the president of the board, our office provided a second version of the resolution yesterday evening to the president of the board, changing, in which all the whereas clauses are the same, the resolve clause, as I understand it, is changes to that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of this request, but due to its timing, authorizes its president and/or the district superintendent to advise the village and county IDA that the Palom Union Free School District takes no position concerning terms of the pilot agreement. If you want, before you decide how you're going to proceed, I can give a little overview of the pilot agreement. It's up to you.
What's the effective difference between taking no position and saying no objection? What's the difference between those two things?
Well, I mean, I think the goal is to express as little opinion as possible, right?
I'm with you. That's why I'm asking, what's the difference between those two things?
One, you're saying you don't object to the terms, and in the other, you're saying you're not taking a position on the terms.
Right, that seems like a significant and appropriate difference. Right, but why, what was the goal? Okay, the original resolution, the no objection, what was, what were we, what, with that language, what was the objective?
As I understand it, the village and county IDA is closing on this agreement, this pilot agreement, this week, and the financing for it. They had asked for the school district's approval of that pilot agreement. I understood that the district was not comfortable providing that agreement, so one of the ways our office tried to accommodate that was to say that you're not objecting to the terms of the agreement. As further discussions led to this further proposal that it be, that you're taking no position on the terms of the pilot agreement.
So, in finance committee meeting, we talked about acknowledging the agreement versus approving an agreement, and I think that that's to your point, Ian, that the resolution is sort of not, the language is not reflecting, the original language is not reflecting an acknowledgement versus an approval.
Okay, all right.
Yes, so I guess I'm answering your question.
But I guess the other question, because I've, I talked to Dan McLaughlin and Mayor Mullen, and my understanding is the village and the town are not voting on any resolution, and were specifically advised that no resolution was needed, but we are. So, if we're being asked to approve it, I feel like we need to get, what is actually in the interest of the school district? And we need to, I think we need to say in some measure, if we have increased expenses or expenditures, we should be reimbursed for that in some way. Or reserve our right in the future to seek some kind of compensation, because, or at least my reading is that school districts do sometimes sue after the fact, and I feel like that's what we're being asked, is, are you going to sue for compensation in the future?
Right, I mean, there's some implication.
And we're giving up our rights.
I don't think, okay, so, under Westchester County law, if there's a pilot agreement, whether you're a party to that pilot agreement or not, you are, you get a share of the pilot payments that are made under that pilot agreement, and you are given those payments in proportion to how you would have received tax revenue from that parcel. In my experience, when school districts have sued, and my experience, I will admit, is limited, because these are usually handled by Judson Seaburn in our office, but when I've been involved in instances where school districts were sued over pilot agreements, sued over pilot agreements, they were not provided a share of the pilot payments, at all.
At all, yeah.
Because they are not always brought to the table. That's not the, fortunately, in Westchester County, you're always assured that you're going to get a share of the pilot payments. I mean, this, as I understand this, this, there's property that's on, the subject of the pilot agreement, there's two properties. It's the property that currently has the firehouse on it for the village of Palom, and there's a parking lot parcel that's adjacent to that parcel. And those are being, through this IDA process, they're being purchased by a development company, and then outside of the pilot agreement, that same development company is going to, on a different municipal property, build a new firehouse, a municipal building, for the village of Palom. The, what's the subject of the pilot agreement? The pilot project is going to be a transit-oriented development that's going to add 127 rental units comprised of four studio apartments, as currently proposed.
I'm just going to start, because I think we all understand the actual agreement. But I guess what we need from the administration is a recommendation. The last email was that we don't know the financial impact, right?
So, in the-
That I'm just, the eventual impact to the district isn't known until the project is fully absorbed, and we know how many students eventually reside in the new units. So, we don't know the financial impact.
The pilot agreement advises the board of the financial inflow that the project will provide, and again, this is, these pilot dollars-
We know the revenue side, but we don't know the expense side.
We know the revenue side, I think, until that, those units are occupied, and the types of families with children that occupy those buildings or those units, the district would not know the absolute impact, because obviously, we don't know what's going to happen in the future.
That's reasonable. Right, but it's that uncertainty that just makes it unclear as to why we have to take, why we have to acknowledge, why we have to take any position now. And we just heard about this on Friday.
One piece I would add, we've been in conversations with the village on this since, I think, 2019 is about when we started those conversations, and they, I think, you know, Jim shared some yesterday with the board, and they've been very transparent about their school impact studies. We've met with them, we've met with the developers over the years. So, this is something that, you know, there has been ongoing, for, you know, for those who've been in the district a little bit longer than some of the newer folks. So, as far as the impact, you know, we have always taken the position that we will teach whoever comes through our doors, which of course we will.
No, this sounds like it could be great. It literally is just the question of what's the bonus on the school board to take any position, given that we're not party to the agreement, we don't know what the outcomes are. And we learned about the vote on Friday, so that it just feels like a fire drill.
Could I maybe speak to that? And it may be worthwhile to, I see the mayor's here, maybe worthwhile to maybe ask the question, because it's really mechanics, you know, that was sent to us on Tuesday. We, council had the opportunity to start reviewing it on Wednesday. We were aware of the pilot, the ongoing pilot, but my understanding is they're coming to closing, and that's the urgency, the same way as one comes to closing on a mortgage, flurry in the last minute, lots of things need to be tied up.
Okay, so that's really important. So, are we putting the closing at risk?
Yes, that's our understanding.
Oh, my, okay, well, that's important.
At least from my conversation with Mayor Mullen, the answer was no. And we have two-
Would you be so kind as to give us-
Oh, actually, let's, we're to have, yeah, can you read the email from the IDA attorney, like what we've specifically been asked to do?
Let me look it up, I'll see if I can find it. Can you see if I can find it? I may have a copy of it.
Yeah, because on one hand, we're being told we have no power to approve this, but please approve it, which doesn't make sense. Or maybe we're being asked to acknowledge.
As I understand it, from the finance committee meeting, we're not a signatory on the deal, so we were not part of the negotiation, but I think that for the closing, you know, and like Dr. Champ said, in the last minutes, when you have this flurry for having all your paperwork in order, they're looking for some kind of acknowledgement that the district has been informed, and we are fully aware as a board of what the terms are. I didn't think that this precluded us from doing anything specific in the future, but I don't know.
I wouldn't say, say that you are, because you're not, you're not signing anything, and certainly not as it's worded, so.
If that's the one.
Okay, so, Michael Curti, and this was addressed to, oh, where is this? To-
You can do that for us.
So, here's, gentlemen, it's my understanding that the village in Palom Green wish to close as early as next week. We are holding all signature pages in escrow, but are missing the village and town signatures to the pilot agreement and pilot mortgage. My colleagues, Chris Nardi, copied with, will send Andrew, Ed, and Judd the signature page packets for those municipal signatures, signatories, I apologize, and the execution copy of the pilot agreement and pilot mortgage with the new schedule that was recently approved and is copied on this email for everyone's reference. Please note, we will need wet signatures of the documents returned to us at the address below, at 44 Hamilton. If you need a FedEx bill, we are happy to provide, please let us know. I will also need a letter or email from the village attorney representing the village. Town and school district are signed off on this new schedule, we will include in the closing transcript.
So, we're signing a mortgage document?
When you say, "signed off on a new schedule," what does that mean?
The payment.
I think it's acknowledging the statement. I think that's up to, that language is up to us, you know, and I think we should be careful with it, right? Make sure we only put in what we're comfortable with, so, but I think it's, I'm sorry, is it?
No, I'm just-
Sorry?
No, go ahead, I'm not, yeah. I'm just surprised, because it's very difficult to say, like, I guess you would sign, it sounds like we are party to the agreement.
No, because it's asking you for a letter or an email from the village attorney representing that the village, town, and school district are signed off. I mean, it's just colloquial language. I think it's trying to say that they, the school district, I mean, I think they are trying to get at the fact that, trying to make sure the school district doesn't have objections to the pilot agreement. If you're not comfortable, nobody can force you to say something you're not comfortable saying, so, if you're not comfortable with that, I think you can acknowledge and take no position on the terms of the agreement, if that's something you're comfortable with.
Right, but you're saying that if we don't, the closing of this multimillion-dollar deal is now at risk?
Possibly. I mean, I haven't negotiated the financing.
They're asking for a letter or an email. Can you just explain again why we're doing a, why it has to be a resolution?
Because if you were, so, if we, your board, your district acts through resolutions by the board, by the board. So, I don't believe that Dr. Champ or Mr. Hickey would have the authority to just say that the school district has no objection, and clearly, it's good that they didn't say that.
Right.
Yeah, on your behalf, without consulting you. So, this is how you can give direction to them, or to your board president, is by-
By resolution.
By resolution.
And the whole part about signature pages, so we're not signing a signature page?
You're not, no, you're not. The part that references the school district is asking for a letter or email from the village attorney representing that the village, town, and school district are aware of the new schedule, basically, are signed off on this new schedule.
Signed off on the new schedule.
That we've signed off on.
I mean, and that's the language of Michael Curti.
But it's a letter from the village of Palom attorney, is what they're asking for.
Correct.
Do you think this is a reasonable request for us to sign this?
To indicate you have no objection to the terms of the pilot?
Okay, yeah, let's start there. Do you think?
I think it's reasonable to ask that you have been made aware of the pilot agreement, absolutely, to acknowledge that. I'm just going to take it in parts.
Yeah, no, excellent, thank you very much. That's actually very helpful.
So, I think it's absolutely reasonable and appropriate that they want to know that the school district is aware of the pilot agreement, okay? I also, I don't think it's unusual or for them to think that the school district may not have objection to the terms, and if so, ask for, to know that the school district has no objection to the terms of the pilot agreement. I mean, this request, I suspect, is coming from the financing of the, for the pilot agreement? Does this come up when they're closing on the financing for the pilot agreement? So, the financier's funding to do what he's going to do on the property. I just don't find it unusual, or, and I don't know how you feel about the impact on your community, but, I mean, some would think this is a potentially positive impact-
I think it'd be great. Yeah, I think, I don't think anyone, or, certainly, I'm not questioning the potential value, if all of this comes to, what is the, what is the school board signing on to? And so, if you're saying, making a statement that we're aware of it, that's sufficient? Okay, but is the implicit assumption, well, they said they were aware of it, which meant that they really had no objection, which meant that they really approved it, so therefore X, right? So, just, again, I'm just trying to, what do we literally, and I'm not implying anyone's sort of hiding the ball, it's just really just trying to understand it, because I, none of, again, I haven't been able to dive into this with any level of detail to really understand it, and this is a big deal. This is a 20-year abatement, this is multiple millions of dollars. So, I, we just need to know what we're approving, we're not objecting, we're being aware of.
So, it is a 20-year deal, and it is a big abatement, but it's an abatement of property right now that's not generating any tax revenue for anyone, because it's municipally owned right now.
Yeah.
So, through the pilot agreement, they're getting an abatement, because they're doing, in theory, they're doing redevelopment, and it's common when you're doing redevelopment of a property, for there to be an abatement of taxes, that's kind of how you lure people in to do those processes. So, initially, for the first three years, it's, you know, generating almost nothing, because it's, they're paying $40,000, and that's going to be, you know, divided up amongst all of the taxing entities that would have gotten a piece of the tax. But starting in year four, it's a pretty significant payment of tax revenue. So, can I say that that tax revenue, that you're ultimately going to receive from this property, is going to offset or equal the impact to you of the, of the children that you're, that are going to come from this parcel? I don't know, none of us can predict that. But that's what happens, honestly, when properties are developed in the community. The school board doesn't normally, is not able to control what goes on those properties, and able to control, you know, what, what schoolchildren might potentially move into those properties. So, I mean, could this ultimately have some negative in the sense that the tax revenue that you're receiving is not equal to the tax revenue, or the cost to educate the children that come from that property? Yes, that's possible. It's also possible that you're not going to have any children come from that property, and you're still going to be getting tax revenues. I just-
And we don't actually get extra, like, because it's deducted from the tax levy?
That's correct.
So, it's not really any extra money, it just reduces the tax levy somewhere.
So, the tax, exactly correct. It would be added to the tax levy, again, it's part of our tax cap calculation. We haven't had to have, we haven't had any pilots, but this would be, it's contemplated in that formula, and that would be brought into it, and you would see whatever tax dollars you had, then the other resident, or the property taxpayers would see the commensurate reduction by whatever that amount is. Again, it's not as if those dollars go directly to the district.
And there's nothing in this agreement that explicitly says that we are, that our hands are tied going forward in any way?
No, but your ability to challenge a pilot agreement is limited.
In general?
In general.
Okay.
I mean, you can, but usually, when they're being challenged by a school district, it's when the school district has been excluded, or feels that it's not getting its proportionate share of the revenue generated by the pilot compared to what the revenue it would receive from a tax.
And this is Westchester County law. Westchester County law requires that the IDA provides you, or all the entities that benefit from the taxes, to receive a proportionate share of the pilot payments.
Right, that's an important point, that the district will receive the proportion that it is of current taxes, right?
Right, so, let me give you an example. So, the pilot agreement, so they're not paying taxes, pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, right? So, this property remains off the tax rolls for the-
For 20 years.
20 years. But they are paying, making a payment in lieu of being taxed, and that payment is going to be divided amongst the taxing entities. So, say, I'm just giving you an example, I don't honestly know what your percentage would be of that, but say you got 20% of the taxes, if that property was on the tax roll, and it went through the taxes, and you would get 20% of the taxes collected on the property. It's probably actually-
Higher.
Higher. Say 50%. So, now, you would be getting 50% share of the pilot payment.
Right, so the proportion is applied to the payment.
Correct.
To me, I guess we've been asked to sign off on the project, and like, what you've said is, we don't really take, we're not involved in development.
Or a negotiation.
Right. So, I don't feel comfortable saying we signed off on it, but it's not our role.
Right, but I think we can say whatever we want, right?
Yeah, I would just say, the district clerk should just mark this email as received, and that's that. Because any vote that we have will be interpreted as we've approved it, essentially.
Well, but I think if the language is very specific, and we can help the village get through their closing, and protect the district at the same time, why wouldn't we do so? I mean, I think we need to be careful of the language, absolutely, you know, but on the advice of council, this is the right way to do it. I don't know why we wouldn't do it that way.
I think, because we're being asked by their attorney to sign off on the project.
But that's not the language that's in the resolution.
So-
In the new resolution.
The rewritten.
Well, you have a resolution before you on your agenda that says you have no objection. You can modify that, someone can make a motion to amend that resolution, right? You could accept the language that was proposed by Judd as an alternative, or you can craft your own language with my assistance, but someone would make a motion to amend the motion that's before you. The motion before you is a motion to say no objection, right, ultimately. I'm boiling down a lot of language that appears in the resolution.
So, let's say, instead of the email saying, "Please sign off on this," it had just said, "Please acknowledge receipt of this." Or like, we got a return receipt piece of mail, because we wouldn't take board action to sign a return receipt piece of mail. Somebody would just sign it in the office. So, like, if we're just acknowledging receipt, I don't think we need any board action for that.
That's fine.
I mean, I think the advice of council, though, is that we should do a resolution.
To acknowledge receipt of an email?
No, to acknowledge that we have the information that's listed in our materials.
But we've been asked to sign off on it, and that's where it came into board action.
Right, so, the question is, is there a way to word this resolution in such a way? Is there, in this resolution, it's currently written, it says, "No objection" two places.
Okay.
And that's, I'm definitely uncomfortable signing this, however, if, well, can we hear from the mayor, just what the risk is on the closing? If that-
Hi, everyone. Welcome to my sandbox. Sure, how's this? All right, thank you. So, let me first just kind of catch you up. So, the last, I think oftentimes, people think that a project is sort of done once the village board approves site plan. The truth is, that's when the work begins. That's when you do all of the internal design work, so, the jail cells, making sure that there's bulletproof glass, making sure that all of the, you know, areas in the firehouse are appropriate, and then those, some of those spaces actually get state approval. So, I bring that up, because there is a small tweak to the pilot, which I'll explain in more depth in a moment, but that's resulting from those things. So, it's not a sort of bigger handout or anything. Additionally, timelines, you start getting really crisp about your timelines. Before the last time we had sort of signed off on the pilot and started moving, we anticipated a timeline that would be a full year further away, but what we've decided to do now is actually, if we can close quickly, then they can start building the first half of their building even before we hand over the firehouse site. So, they're right now in the middle of demolishing Lot 2. If they can build that first half, they'll start their pilot payments a year early. And I think sometimes, when we think about the value of the deal, we think about the pilot, we think of like, the pilot is the money that we're getting. The reality is, the pilot is the transition that stabilizes the financing, so that we can get to year 21. Once the building is full, it's occupied, it has no debt dragging down its value, it can be properly assessed, and that's really the big thing. Okay, so, the value of the pilot is going to be sort of dependent on when it starts. If we push it off for another five years, it will look more valuable, but that's five years of getting $39,000 from the Capital One site, instead of five years of transitioning into $600,000 payments from this new developer. So, so the timelines have now crystallized, we're ready to go, and we're going to be a year ahead of schedule. The internal designs have now crystallized, we're good to go on that, we have the construction agreement, we have the construction drawings in our possession, which means we're now teed up to close with the IDA. To be clear, we are not closing with the IDA. The Westchester County IDA, the way that that arrangement works is they're governmental agency, so they're purchasing a parcel of land, just like you all purchased the house, right? They purchase it, it is no longer going to be on the tax rolls. Now, there are some scenarios where that becomes really problematic. If you have a property that's on the tax rolls, maybe it's paying half a million dollars in taxes, but now somebody wants to make it 10 stories higher, they take it off the tax rolls, they then do a deal with the IDA, and suddenly, everybody's taxes go up, because there's no longer this one taxpayer making those payments. So, it can hurt your tax base. In that situation, what had, it's actually part of the law, what the state requires the IDA to do- the IDA to do is get acknowledgement from all of the affected taxing jurisdictions so that there's not some major hoopla about it. As a result, most IDAs, well, I should say, the good IDAs, will have some professional engagement with all of the affected taxing jurisdictions, and they'll make sure that at no point is the value, the reduced value lower than what was there before. So it stabilizes your base. Now, in our situation, that's not a problem at all, because the property where the pilot applies to is not on the tax rolls anyway. That being said, the Capital One Bank is on the tax rolls. We currently get $39,000 a year from that piece. The village is taking that off the tax rolls in order for us to have our municipal center there. Now, what we worked into the pilot from the beginning, and just to be clear, I do want to allay some fears, from the start of this, we have been doing this so that it would be as advantageous to the school district at the start. That's why they only have five three-bedrooms, which is where you get more school kids. It's also why we did a full-year GEIS with 100-page document and 1,000 pages of dependencies, just looking at whether or not this would be a negative impact. That being said, we also built into the pilot, instead of having a couple of years while they're transitioning, of zero taxes paid. We actually built in the transition period of a $40,000 payment to offset a property that has nothing to do with the pilot, just to offset the Capital One, because we didn't want a situation where at any point it was going to hurt our tax base. The shift that has happened in the pilot is primarily that we had $165,000 in new costs related to the jail cells, so we needed to figure out some way to work that into that window. At the same time, we knew that we were going to get to start the payments earlier. So a lot of that window has slid over, and you'll notice in the scale, now there's three $40,000 payments, before there was two $40,000 payments. So effectively, we're now getting credit against the 20 years of, of Year Zero in the previous arrangement. Does that make sense?
It does, yes.
Okay. Cool. So the window has slid forward, we're going to get to full taxes a year earlier, but the window looks smaller because we've given up the sort of 20th year of 800,000, which will actually be 1. some million now, and we've replaced that with a 40,000 at the start of the pilot. So the, the window looks less valuable, but it's actually more valuable to us, if we can stay on the timeline. So, just so you know, I've never, I've never seen a school district actually vote on a resolution, and I've never, I've never heard that happen. I think you should follow the advice of your council, obviously, and you guys have to do what's right for the school district, so definitely do that if you need to do that. We did not realize there would be sort of, any sort of hubbub about anything until Wednesday. So as soon as they told us, hey, we need an email from the school board's attorney and the town's attorney saying you're on board, we had the same question you had, what does on board mean? So I, I wish I was an attorney and I could resolve that for you, but I, for what it's worth, the village, the village, town, and school are not signatories to the IDA agreement with Pelham House. The land itself is going to be owned by a governmental agency, so they're going to have a financing contract there. The village is going to acknowledge as a beneficiary. So we're simply acknowledging that we're now going to receive some money from the county, through the county IDA, from this developer. I don't know if that helps resolve it, but that's, that's the way that I understand it. We're simply acknowledging as beneficiaries of these payments that now will be received by all of our various jurisdictions.
Right, well, that's an, that's an interesting distinction, right? Because that's actually not acknowledging the pilot agreement, that's saying, we're acknowledging that we're going to receive money from this agreement.
And this is the schedule we're getting, right?
Okay, well, that, that seems to put us on the hook to receive money and no other obligation. What do you think about that?
I think that works.
Okay.
I think that's what they're looking for, is for you to acknowledge, because you're acknowledging the agreement by, indirectly though, by acknowledging that you're going to get payment through them. I mean, that's the, how you're getting payments is through the agreement. Without the agreement, there would be no payments to the-
Right, although it does seem different to say we're acknowledging that we're receiving money as opposed to-
Yeah, using the term beneficiary of payments probably makes, you know, as clear as it can possibly.
Right.
So the, did the original language mean no objection to receiving payment?
Yeah, well, actually, I mean, the original, right, yeah. But do you, do you agree with Mr. Mullin that no other school boards have signed this kind of-
I should say, to my knowledge, I'm not trying-
Of course, of course. I, you've done it, I know.
That, that's not my, been my experience, and sometimes school districts are signatories to these agreements, so the agreements vary, but if you're being asked to approve something, I mean, that's a board decision, that's not a superintendent decision, not a, a gym, an assistant superintendent for business decision.
Yeah, for sure.
And Mr. Mullin, there seems to be some, a lack of clarity around what happens if we don't provide some acknowledgement, as we're debating now, what happens?
I don't know exactly, but I can't imagine it's good. I, I think it's, I think that there is an elephant in the room, which is that it's awkward, right? It's, it's awkward anytime that the village is going to be doing something with its land. And it could potentially impact the school district in a negative way. And so it makes sense that there would be a desire to sort of defend and hold harmless your institution. At the same time, I think we all kind of have to work together to make sure it works out. And I think that particular move to not approve, to communicate to the IDA that the school district does not want to have this happen, one scenario is it delays everything, and it becomes kind of a political thing. I, I don't really understand the legal standing of it. When you bought the school, I don't think we could have objected to those taxes coming off. The IDA is a governmental agency, so I, I don't think that there's actually a legal justification for it, again, not an attorney, to be clear, but do I think it could be politically explosive and result in a whole lot of these meetings? I do.
But you said that if we voted to not approve, I don't think anyone's proposing that. I think what we're trying to finesse the language to do-
Right.
Is say, we acknowledge it, we're aware of it, we neither object nor don't object, you know, we're trying to remain extremely sort of neutral, because we're not a signatory on the deal.
Totally.
To the extent there is ever some kind of political squabbling down the road between different jurisdictions, we don't want to be a part of that.
Right.
You know, as you like to say, we don't want to put our thumb on the scale in any direction. That being said, we don't want to hold the thing up-
Right.
Well, I don't want to hold the thing up by refusing to acknowledge its existence.
Totally. I, I think ultimately that's a conversation with your council.
Right, or to acknowledge that we'll be receiving payments, if that's what we need to do.
Beneficiary.
Yeah.
What was that exact language?
We'll be acknowledging as a beneficiary.
Yeah, I asked if maybe the IDA attorney could come to explain what the email meant, but they weren't able to come.
Well, that was at 10 o'clock last night that you made that request.
For our, because we kind of had an emergency meeting about it, and it seemed urgent, so I thought maybe they could come and explain it, but-
I don't have the IDA council on speed. I don't know the IDA council.
Because we're kind of having a fight, like you said, but they don't show up, so.
But I know you've read it several times, just humor me and do it one more time.
Sure, I mean, we can, you haven't accepted this version yet, so this version can still be modified, I just want you to, and I wrote something that matches what he said, so. The, the version that Judd created last night, I'm just reading the resolved clause, right? So that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of this request, but due to its timing, authorizes its president and/or the district superintendent to advise the village and county IDA that Putnam, I'm sorry, that Pelham Union Free School District takes no position concerning terms of the pilot agreement. I mean, what I think may be more amenable to you and perhaps to the IDA, who's looking for some acknowledgement from you, is that we could accept the village's suggested language and change that to be that, due to its timing, authorizes its president and/or the district superintendent to advise the village and county IDA that Pelham Union Free School District, let me say, is aware of and acknowledges that it is a beneficiary of the pilot agreement.
And that precludes no further action down the line if somehow we felt we'd been stiffed in any, any way?
You're not waiving any rights through that language, put it that way. I, I don't want to say what rights those are exactly, because I, without doing a lot of research, I don't know what rights you would have to challenge the, the payments that you're getting in the future, or, or what have you, or the agreement, but you're not waiving any rights to that language.
May I make a recommendation perhaps?
Yeah.
If future law, if lawsuits from school districts typically are around proportional shares, you could include some language that you're acknowledging yourself as a beneficiary of your proportional share, which does theoretically protect you in the future.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea.
And how would you reword the whereas language? Can we both be a beneficiary and take no position?
I mean, you can take out the no position and just say, we acknowledge that we're a beneficiary.
No, no, I'm asking if we can have our cake and eat it too, which is, which is say that we're a beneficiary.
Put some of the stuff that paid.
And, exactly, we take no position and we're a beneficiary.
I was saying, okay. I thought you were saying the opposite, like, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, in some ways, I don't know how you, you say, I, I think by just saying they, acknowledging that you have, you're aware of the pilot agreement and that you're a beneficiary of it, you're not taking, the only position you're taking is, you're, you're taking a position in the sense that you're a beneficiary of the pilot agreement.
How about we, we're taking no further position?
That's fine.
Okay. I did go to law school.
Close enough.
There's also another member of the community.
I mean, should we, I guess we'd-
Sure.
We'll open up for public comment.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody, I'm Mike Carpenter, 50th Central Avenue, for the record. You've spent a lot of time focusing on the financial aspect of this, of this transaction, right? What this pilot is enabling the village to do should not be forgotten. So there is a, a big bundle of public benefit that this transaction includes. The pilot is one part of it, but the other parts also are important to the school itself. You mentioned a fire drill, and I thought that was kind of a good example. If you were to call 911 right now, you're going to get the first responders from the village of Pelham. This project keeps those first responders in the 21st century. Those are our EMTs, our police, our police officers, and our firefighters. They're the first ones here to help you and our students, and this transaction makes that possible. So when you're thinking about the pilot, please keep in mind that there's a bigger benefit to the public than just the financial aspect of it, and this school is a direct, direct receiv-, recipient of those, of those benefits. And in, in the village of Pelham is four of your schools. We have the biggest elementary school up at Hutchinson, we've got the building we're in right now, and the high school next door, where the entire town sends all of their students from 6th grade to 12th grade. So please, when you're focusing on this pilot agreement, remember the big picture, and just don't forget that this is, this is needed, it's necessary. We've been working on it for four or five years now. If you have questions, come talk to us, we're easy to get to. So just try and keep the big picture in mind. Thanks.
Thank you. Just speaking to the stool.
Cool.
Yeah.
Hello, my name's Brian Cover, I'm at 206 Sixth Avenue, I guess for the record. Realizing, after attending, it was very helpful to hear from, from the mayor and so forth on kind of the due process of kind of what we're doing, I guess overall, though, and not dismissing the benefits of Pelham House, I, I would have concerns for the board on the amount of the pilot, just because I think a lot of this amount was discussed not as publicly as I could find numbers for, and so I, I do have concerns over that. I believe the pilot started out as a 16.9 million window in 2020 through the RFP, with an additional 11 students estimated through the units. Since that time, the number of units in the building has increased, the pilot payment window has decreased by 5 million or so. Granted, we are bringing in that, that one year, so not to dismiss that benefit, but that's only a $1 million payment, so we're still 4 million in the hole. With the increase in units, we are seeing probably a number of additional students into the district. I think 11 is a rather low estimate, given the number of units in the building. At a average cost of unit, or for each student of $25,000, granted that is not a marginal cost, that's the average cost, over a 5% increase for 20 years, that's looking at over $9 million in costs associated with those students at 11. And, yeah, I think that the, I would have concerns as the board over the amount of the pilot, but as a beneficiary, anything is greater than the $39,000 the Capital One property was bringing in, but would have concerns over the total amount, so, thank you.
Thank you.
We haven't had yet a motion, haven't yet had a motion. I guess that's the question is-
Do we have a revised proposed resolution?
I can't, I can't make a motion, but I can-
Do we need to amend the, the resolution, or?
Someone's make a, so I'll read what I'm proposing, that someone may want to make a motion to amend the, the whereas, or the resolved clause of the pending motion to read.
And the whereas, right.
Did we-
Can you just point me to which whereas clause you're questioning, sorry?
And we haven't had an initial motion to Stephanie, I don't know-
So this is, this was actually posted on the website right now. Whereas, the Board of Education is advised, has no objection to the pilot agreement's proposed terms. Now, therefore, it be resolved, and then, oh, then what's on the website is different than what you're looking at.
Sorry.
All right, so-
All, all, what's on the website is what was provided to us last week.
On Friday.
I haven't been provided with the revised document yet.
Okay, so, he just took this out, and like this, I don't think he meant that one. Sorry. Yes, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Sorry, Ian. Thank you. All right. So... Oh, okay.
So we can have a motion to consider this resolution as written? And then you want maybe read it the way you have it?
Yes. So before I do that though, I believe he opened the motion.
Not, not yet. We do procedurally, I think we need a motion on the item.
Yes.
And then we need a motion to amend.
Amend. Correct. I'm sorry. I just thought he had done the board discussion.
We didn't do that before the discussion.
Well, let's, I mean, can we just have a motion to consider the resolution as written now? Or do we need to amend it?
I think because it was posted as part of your agenda already, you should be opening that motion.
Okay. And the motion that we have on the agenda is to...
To acknowledge.
Acknowledge?
No. Oh, well, what's on the website?
Motion to acknowledge pilot agreement.
Oh, in the, right, in the agenda.
That's what's on the agenda right now.
But in the resolution itself, the word authorize, oh, no. I'm sorry, the word acknowledge.
I think you're, you're motioning to open this item and then there would need to be another motion to amend.
To amend. So do we have the item number? Because maybe the way to say it is the motion to act on item number.
There you go.
You know, exactly. I don't have it in front of me, but...
Yeah, 3.1.
3.1.
So motion to consider item 3.
Yep.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Well... Okay. So we have a motion. Now we need a motion to amend.
And then I would like to make a motion to amend item 3.1.
Okay.
You need a second?
Second.
Well, actually, before you second, let me read what I think your motion to amend is, okay? So the motion to amend would be to remove the last whereas clause of item 3.2 as presented in the agenda.
Which currently reads? It currently reads, whereas the Board of Education deems it advisable to acknowledge it has no objection to the pilot agreement's proposed terms.
So that's being...
So we're striking that.
We're striking that. And then to amend the therefore be it resolved clause to read that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of this request, but due to its timing, authorizes its president and/or district superintendent to advise the Village and County IDA that the Pelham Union Free School District is aware of and acknowledges that it is a proportionate beneficiary of the pilot agreement and takes no further position with respect to the pilot agreement.
That sounds good. But do we need the due to its timing clause?
No, we can take that out. Yeah, I'm not sure what that's referencing.
Okay. That was before when we...
Referencing that we got, we were asked for this on Tuesday.
But the truth of the matter, even if, even if it weren't a fire drill, I think I have the same...
Okay. So let me try it one more time.
Yep.
So to, so we're amending to remove the last whereas clause and we're amending to modify the resolved clause to read that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of this request and authorizes its president and/or district superintendent to advise the Village and County IDA that Pelham Union Free School District is aware of and acknowledges that it is a proportionate beneficiary of the pilot agreement and takes no further position with respect to the pilot agreement.
Do you need to clarify the request? Do you need to, do you need to...
It's in the whereas clauses.
Is it? Because I was looking for the word request.
It doesn't say request as a solicited, it's response.
I would just match up whatever the, that's your call. I would just match up whatever the actual language is. It's a nit.
Let me say something. It's response.
So you want request changed to solicitation, this?
Yeah. I would just match up, you know, I just like being tight on this kind of stuff. So if, if the word is solicitation, then I would, then say solicitation.
Well, it was the prior whereas clause just is not a signatory there too. The Village and County IDA have solicited its response to proposed pilot terms. And I think to say that's a request in a different form.
Okay. Maybe read it one more time.
Okay. So the amendments by this child, as I understand it, is that we are going to remove the last whereas clause from item 3.1 on the agenda, as well as modify the resolved clause to read therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of this request and authorizes its president and/or district superintendent to advise the Village and County IDA that Pelham Union Free School District is aware of and acknowledges that it is a proportionate beneficiary of the pilot agreement and takes no further position with respect to the pilot agreement. Someone will need to second?
Second.
Okay. Now you can...
So we're going to vote on the amended?
Correct. Whether everyone accepts that amendment.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions?
And now you want to vote on the motion as amended.
Okay. Any further discussion about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. And I don't think we have anything else, right? We already did public comments, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? No.
Okay.